I take that back, it's taking longer than I thought. All right, you're now live on YouTube.
All right, welcome to our city council meeting, our regular meeting. It is Tuesday, January 5th, 2021, and it's 7:00 PM. We have a, we're still missing one council member, hopefully they'll be on. So we'll look forward to that. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there anybody here that would like to lead us in that pledge?
I'll do it, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Please stand. The Pledge of Allegiance is with me. I pledge allegiance.
With the flag of the United States of America.
The Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, would also like to have an invocation or inspirational thought? Is there anybody willing to do that for us? No takers? All right, I'll offer it. Our Heavenly Father, as we bear eyes before thee this evening, grateful for the many blessings that we enjoy. We're grateful for this new year and the opportunities that we look forward to this coming year. We'll be able to accomplish all that we set out to do. We are grateful, Father, for this council meeting this night and for these good men and women who serve diligently to make our city better. Well, Father, we pray that thy Spirit be with us as we make these decisions this evening. That will be in tune with thee, and I will. We're grateful for the city staff and for their hard work as well, for all that they do. We're also grateful for each resident and the things that they do to make Santaquin even a better place. We pray for all those who may be sick or mourning at this time. We pray for them. We pray for our country, but we will continue to enjoy the freedoms we enjoy. We'll be able to be kind and caring to everyone around us. We're grateful again for this evening, and we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. All right. Looks like we have everybody now, don't we? All right, I failed to welcome all those who are on YouTube, as well as those who are on Zoom with us tonight. It is my opportunity now, as Mayor, to give the State of the City address. So my fellow residents at Santaquin City, those watching on YouTube, as well as the city council members and the members of our city staff. I want to thank you for joining me as I present this State of the City address for the calendar year 2020. What a unique year it has been. We have been faced with many challenges, and I believe we are stronger and more prepared for the future than ever before. For the past seven years, I have been, it's been my honor to serve this community as your mayor and to serve on the city council for the one and a half years preceding. Over that period of time, Santaquin City has changed significantly as Utah's population has grown. The growth in Utah's population has landed solidly upon our community. Clearly, the beauty and quality of life of Santaquin City has been discovered. Growth does not come without its challenges. While it cannot be stopped, we can work together to ensure that our future course holds true to the heritage and character established by our forbears. I know we are better and stronger for the contributions made by our newest residents, which add to the rich legacy that has been built by countless contributors since our city's inception. We are a tapestry of individuals' lives woven together into a wonderful community full of hope and promise. Many of our community may ask the question, but what about the good old days? And I would answer that, these are the good old days. For those who follow us, from our children to our grandchildren and to our future friends and neighbors who will join us in the years ahead. We must do all we can today to make these days great, to find joy in the journey and to make lasting decisions that will benefit our posterity for generations to come. As we recently closed the 2020 calendar year, I want to celebrate some of our successes as we work towards meeting our goals. I also want to share our vision for the future of our community. During the past fiscal year, we celebrated a monumental event with the opening of the Macy's Grocery Store, Ace Hardware, Arctic Circle, and Beans and Brew. These first phase, this first phase of a 32-acre commercial development is and will continue to be an incredible blessing to our community by creating jobs and enhancing our commercial tax base. There is significant talk of future businesses which will occupy the available pad sites to the south and east of Macy's. We will continue to grow and build our local economy. However, it will only succeed if everyone, I emphasize everyone, of us works to keep our local dollars local in support of local businesses. To do our part, it was our pleasure to support our local business community through the Santaquin City Stimulus Program in the month of September. This direct stimulus program used CARES Act dollars for the benefit of our local businesses. It was so successful that it was emulated by both Payson City and Spanish Fork City due to the tremendous success which was proven right here in Santaquin. We also celebrated the completion of the lighting and lighting of the Myron Olson Plaza and its clock tower and arbor at the entrance of our community. It was a privilege to honor a great man and with the dedication of this landmark. It is hoped this clock tower will be appreciated and cared for by our residents for many years to come. Truly, this is the front porch of our city, and it deserves our best effort to create a beautiful and inviting gathering place. In the spring, we intend to plant beautiful flowers in its planter boxes and grow vines along the arbor. It is our hope this area will be surrounded by, in the future, by restaurants with outdoor seating, which will complement the plaza and enhance the quaint and nostalgic look and feel of our agricultural community. Transportation and overall community connectivity has been a major focus for Santaquin City in 2020 as well. Of course, we had the opportunity to celebrate the completion of the Summit Ridge Parkway Extension and the paving of Highland Drive to the South Exit. We anticipate the continuation and connection of Highland Drive with the construction of a new intersection at Canyon Road that will commence in the spring of 2021. This project will fully connect the frontage road from Exit 244 to Exit 242. In 2020, we also reconstructed North Center Street, north of Apple Valley Elementary, which was failing and in dire need of repair. The widening work along the north portion, 300 West Street, was also completed. Our city staff and elected leaders were successful in being awarded $4.5 million in grant funding for the fiscal year 2021-2022 for the next phase of widening of our main street from 300 East to 100 West. We are also maintaining the constant dialogue with UDOT officials, wherein we are encouraging them to address the traffic issues surrounding the interchange at I-15, US 6 Main Street, and SR 198. Community connectivity through new road construction was a major goal of our city during the past year. Not only have we provided quicker response times for our public safety and a secondary access for our residents, we have brought our three major neighborhoods, Summit Ridge, the East Bench, and the core area of downtown, together into one community. This has enhanced the economic vitality of our community and has brought us closer together. In 2020, we also saw the completion of the new 3.2 million gallon East Bench irrigation tank and booster pump station. This new irrigation water storage facility relieved the need and use of culinary water in the secondary irrigation system for the majority of the East Bench. Plans for a similar tank in the Summit Ridge area in 2021-2022 will provide the same level of service for those residents as well. Between the booster pumps, which allows us to move water from any of our water sources to any area of our community, as well as the new storage tank systems, Santaquin City is well positioned to continue our efforts to reserve our most precious natural resource, that is water. Our future years, in future years, our irrigation system will be ready to connect to the Central Utah Water Project, CUP, which would further strengthen our reserves for generations to come. On the topic of water and to continue in the efforts to create a sustainable resource for future generations, a majority, a major investment was made in 2020 to bring the next processing train of our water reclamation facility online. Without raising fees or taxes for this capital improvement project, Santaquin City successfully upgraded the capacity of our plant to continue to handle the growth of our community. During the first five years of its complete operation, we recycled and reused a billion gallons of water, irrigation water. As we approach our second five-year anniversary in 2021, it is anticipated we will exceed the amount of water which is conserved during the first anniversary period. The James E. DeGraffanry Water Reclamation Facility has truly been a blessing to our community, and it will continue to be for generations to come. I am also very pleased to report that we have awarded, we have been awarded $12.7 million in federal funds for the future development of waters, the storm drainage basins along our East Bench to catch high water and debris flow which will protect our homes and our infrastructure. These debris basins will be, will take many years to plan and construct. However, 100% of the funding for these projects was acquired through federal grant sources, except for the cost of the land acquisition, which will be paid for by Santaquin City locally. This will take planning and effective land use negotiations in the months and years ahead so we can lessen the financial burden of our residents. I am also happy to report that changes to our recreation department have taken center stage in 2020. Despite the restrictions imposed upon us during the COVID-19, our community services department, with the support of our Recreation Arts, Art and Parks, RAP Tax Committee, have been making great investments into our community. We have added a new frisbee golf course at the Theodore Allen Park. We are about to kick off construction of a new Utah Jazz basketball court in our Centennial Park in the spring as well. We are also very excited to see many children and adults playing on our new Harvest View complex. Finally, I am happy to report that plans are being developed for a second phase of the Harvest View complex, which will include cave parking, pickleball courts, a playground facility, as well as ADA and landscape enhancements. New programs and new events are also in the planning phases for the, for the time when our pandemic restrictions are lifted and we can congregate together once more. I would not be providing a complete report of 2020 if I did not express the gratitude I have for our first responders who have served us so well through the COVID-19 pandemic. I would be, it would be an understatement to say that our public safety departments have worked extremely hard this past year as they have dealt professionally with the added stress of being on the front lines of this pandemic. However, their regular workloads never ceased during this period of difficulty as they responded to keep our community safe during the William Fire and the Goshen Fire. In addition to these extreme events, they have also been busy with disaster planning and community outreach. We are, we have updated the Public Safety Master Plan in 2020, as well as the Transportation Master Plan, which is so critical to our rapid response needs of our frontline heroes. Lastly, 2020 was a year where we have truly increased our transparency, communication, and community recognition. As a city, we are constantly using our YouTube channel to livestream public meetings with social distancing mandates. This new form of transparency has allowed the public to stay better informed and engaged in the city's business and decision-making. As the pandemic grew more serious and increased restrictions, the city invested in a professional camera system to improve video and audio quality for these meetings. As promised, we created a 2020 calendar from the beautiful images submitted to What Do We Love About Santaquin Monthly Photo Contest. Because the calendar received much appreciation from the community last year, a 2021 calendar has been created using photos of Santaquin submitted to the contest, which also included free advertisement for participating local businesses. Now our vision of the future. As we enter this new calendar year, our city council has outlined five main goals for the operation of our city's efforts. Those include, number one, providing quality city services. Two, maintaining a sustainable budget. Three, promoting and supporting economic development. Four, promoting community involvement. And number five, ensuring proactive regional collaboration. While we have nearly 50 projects underway or that are in the planning phases, such as the Highland Drive Canyon Road intersection, Summit Ridge water tank, and the Harvest View pickleball courts previously mentioned, I will conclude my remarks by focusing on three main projects we are undertaking in 2021. Number one, the general plan update. This month marks the kickoff of the update to our general plan. Santaquin City has engaged the services of the professional consulting firm, People Plus Place. As our community faces significant challenges from growth, comprehensive community engagement in the development of our future plans is more essential than ever before. This firm recently completed a general plan update for Heber City with glowing reviews. Perhaps even more so than Santaquin, Heber City has been experiencing a tremendous amount of change. Through an extensive amount of community engagement, the development of their future plans was inclusive, transparent, and actively involved the voice of the residents from all demographics. While we still face many challenges from a pandemic, which make traditional gatherings such as town hall meetings very difficult, I am confident that People Plus Place will capture the independent thoughts and opinions of our residents so that our future planning and development could support a collective vision. Number two, agritourism, regional planning. Plans to promote our region as an agritourism destination are now fully underway. Utah State University is leading a group of key stakeholders to study and plan the South Exit 242 area of our city, now titled Harvest View at 242. Santaquin is known for its many orchards filled with abundant fruit and for its greenhouse is blossoming with beautiful flowers. However, our region is also known for its high-tech agricultural industries such as lavender fields and year-round tomato producers. People travel from far and wide to connect with farms that produce their food, and our area has plenty to offer. Together with the general plan update, we will create a sustainable vision for the development of our community that preserves the past and respects the future. Number three, a new city hall. Lastly, I'm very excited to report on the progress of our new city hall. If you have been following our city council meetings, you know that the new city hall will be built in the heart of our community, directly across the street from our city library. Plans are currently at the 20% design level, and the city is about to award a Construction Manager, General Contractor, CMG, GC, Service Agreement this evening. All of our funding is in place, having received a double A rating with standards and pores and a 1.53% interest rate on our financial package. With all of these pieces of the puzzle falling into place, we anticipate a groundbreaking later this spring. It is our goal to have the exterior of the building completed throughout the summer and fall so the interior work can be completed over the 2021-2022 winter. We, it is anticipated the building will be completed in the spring of 2022. This new building will become the home of utility billing, community development, engineering, administration, finance, and legal departments. It will also have plenty of community gathering spaces with a large multipurpose room with a kitchen that can be used for the seniors and veterans while also being available for rental by the public at large. The main floor will hold our council chambers and will have plenty of expansion area to meet the needs of our community into the future. Following the look and feel of the Santa Clara Utah City Hall with a brick exterior instead of the Southern Utah red sandstone, the new building will be constructed to offset and complement the Santaquin Chieftain Museum and Santaquin Library architecture. A city hall and a community gathering place is a missing element in our community. This will become the people's house where ideas can be shared, plans can be developed and implemented, and where community events can be held. In many respects, our community is missing its heart and to some degree, its identity. By not having a centralized gathering place, constructing a new city hall in the heart of our community will build a bridge from our historic roots to our future aspirations. We are very excited to develop and construct this building in the months ahead. In conclusion, on a final note, one of my favorite quotes is from a book by Mitch Albom entitled Tuesdays with Maury. It says, quote, "The way you get meaning into your life is to devote yourself to loving others. Devote yourself to your community around you and to devote yourself to something that gives you purpose and meaning." May I encourage you to get involved in our community in some small way during the year ahead, whether it be serving a neighbor, supporting a local business, or volunteering in a more formal capacity. May you always consider how you can make a difference and how you can contribute to a better Santaquin City. This is our home, the home that we love, and we must do everything we can to preserve it, grow it, and see it blossom for our children, grandchildren, and future friends and neighbors. It has been a pleasure and delight to be your mayor and to serve you for the past eight and a half years as a member of our city council. I am looking forward to a wonderful year ahead for our growing community. There is so much opportunity that lays before us. We only need to remain focused and work together for these great things to become a reality. Thank you again for your support and for your help in charting a beautiful future for Santaquin City. Thank you. I hope you're still awake. All right, moving on with the agenda. Were there any declarations of conflict of interest with anything that's on the agenda tonight? No? Okay. Our consent agenda tonight, we have the minutes of our council work session, minutes of December 15th, 2020. We also have the minutes of our regular council meeting of December 15th, 2020. So council have an opportunity to read those minutes and if you have any additions or corrections. Okay, also on the consent agenda, we have the bills for $282,293.44. Any questions or concerns on the bills? Okay, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Miller, do we have a second?
Second, Mayor.
We have a second by Councilman Meekum. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed, say aye. Okay. Our public forum tonight, Aaron, are you there, do we have any?
Yeah, I'm here, we have one public comment. I'll go ahead and read that, it's from Jeffrey Sidaway. He says, esteemed council members, last month there was yet again a presentation in a city council meeting regarding why ranked choice voting should be used in Santaquin. This was presented once back in July, and I find it disappointing that it's been presented once again without a presentation, providing the counter arguments on this issue. As such, I felt compelled to provide the counterpoints to you and city residents. Below is an update to the points made against ranked choice voting back in July. One, proponents of ranked choice voting claim that ranked choice voting, you would never ever not have 50% or higher in voting. Regardless of the blatant double negative, that is actually not true. In 2014, political scientist Craig Burnett and Vladimir Kogan analyzed RCB ballots from four elections in California and Washington, making up around 600,000 ballots. They found that in those four races, not once did the winner receive the majority of votes cast. His never ever scenario can only occur if every ballot ranks every single candidate. But many voters don't want to give some candidates any ranking at all. Thus, RCB often results in a winner with less than 50%. Proponents claim that there is never ever, never ever is an opportunity for your ballots to not count in a meaningful way. Again, that simply isn't true based on the study mentioned above. This is for the same reason that winners don't always achieve 50%. It's called ballot exhaustion. If there are five candidates and I only rank my top three, because the last two are not viable options for my political position, in the fourth and fifth rounds of counting, I don't have a vote. That happens very often in those four elections mentioned above between 9.6 and 27. That happens very often in those four elections mentioned above between nine point six and twenty-seven percent of first round ballots didn't make it through all the rounds of counting. This concept is also based on the idea that if your candidate doesn't win, your vote didn't count in a meaningful way, which is an erroneous view of the democratic process. Three, Australia, where ranked choice voting has been used for nearly a century is a great example to actually see how ranked choice voting will work here. Nearly ninety percent of the candidates who win the first round just go on winning the election. Very rarely are the end results much different than the first round. Why revamp an entire system just to get the same result? Beyond that, a closer look at the Australian political system that suppose ten percent improvement isn't really an improvement. Australia does not have the two-party system we have. They have multiple parties, but ultimately all the parties fall under one of the two larger umbrellas. Essentially, they only have the illusion of more choices. And when the first round winner doesn't win the overall election, it is always a candidate under the same overall umbrella as the first round winner. Yet the exact same results ideologically, just with a different base. Four, proponents state that no primaries mean a cheaper election. Possibly in the long run, but every new system comes with cost to educate voters on how it works. New ballot designs with machine software to effectively count the ballots and votes in the system. Also keeping track of these ballots naturally infuses the process to the follies of human error. I personally know people who recent mail-in and in-person ballots have not been recorded by the state. We have been, have enough human error in these elections as it is. We shouldn't add elements that would exploit that more than resolve it. Let's not forget the quagmire that is this last election. The requirement of new devices and software is not something I trust without question. But finally, the idea that this will remove negative campaigning will be a good argument for state and national elections. But that is not a problem with small municipalities. When was the last time anyone in Santaquin witnessed a negative campaign from one candidate to another? I've only seen respect between candidates, whereas negativity only comes when addressing issues, which is an election aspect we need to remain in place so that we fully understand the position of our candidates. To be clear, regardless of whether or not Santaquin adopts RCV as a system of choice, I will continue to vote in every election and do all I can to promote voting among my neighbors. However, from my point of view here, it seems RCV is a solution looking for a problem. And the problems it has found are not solved by the solution it has proposed. We don't need a shiny new object to distract us. We need government officials to work with us for the betterment of our community. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, awards. Tonight, we'd like to honor our volunteer of the month. Ben, you put his picture up. Do you have the, to read about him? I know you're working on it.
Ben, you're muted.
Penny, can you allow me to share?
Done.
Okay, there we go. Bob Conder is a volunteer of our month of, for January two thousand twenty-one. Bob is a member of the first Santaquin Rap Tax Committee and was a voice of support for funds to go towards the museum, arts, and in the parks and cultural arts initiatives. He has been an instrument, been instrumental in helping start a group discussion related to cultural arts in our area. His visionary leadership has led this group to developing programs and events in cultural arts in the cultural arts field for two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. Bob has worked in the entertainment business most of his life and the last forty years working in film around the world. Along the way, he taught film at East Hollywood High School and for the last thirteen years taught film management and writing at UBU. Bob has two business degrees from the University of Phoenix and a creative writing MFA from Full Sales University. Bob and his wife Mary have lived in Santaquin for the last five years. They have six children, five stepchildren, thirty-one grandchildren, and seven really great grandchildren. When asked about what inspired him to volunteer for Santaquin City, Bob stated, "I have found the arts are the heart and soul of every community. They represent and express the desire and future of those who participate, whether by creating, presenting, observing, or financing the art forms. My desire in working with the various committees has been to advance the arts here, thereby advancing the community in a positive creative direction." Thank you, Bob, for your dedicated and valued service to Santaquin City.
Sadly to report, Bob is leaving our community and we wish him well in his travels. We also have planning awards of those thanking those who have served on the planning commission, the museum board, and the recreation board. They are Jessica Tolman, Kyle Frankham, Jenny Fornellius, Keela Gowdy, Elizabeth Robertson, Jake Kester, Kim Barr, Jessica Tolman again, Kim Finch, Chad Finch, David Harris, Sarah Olson, Spencer Hensy, and Erin Jarrett. And we would like to thank these members of our community have served so well on the boards and the commission. And they've come to the end of a great time in their service to our community. And we thank them for all that they've done out there. Also, we have the appointments for the new boards and the commission. I would like to present these since we're on Zoom and it's hard to get together. We usually have them all come to our council meeting and where the council can ask questions to each one that I have met with and feel like that they are the ones that need to be appointed to these positions. But way the world we live in now, the council has had an opportunity to know their names and know a little about them, but had the opportunity to ask questions if they had. And so let me tell you who they are and for the length of term that they're serving. So on the planning commission, we have Commissioner Kylie Lance, who is doing a second term now, a three-year term. We have Commissioner Drew Hoffman, who is starting a new three-year term as a new appointment. We have Commissioner Brianna Nixon, who was serving a three-year term as a new appointment. And also, we have a new alternate board member, Brad Gunnel, who has served on the planning commission as a, as a member and now will be an alternate to a three-year term position there. Also, on the new community service board, it's a newly formed board, and they have staggered terms. So with that, the, a new board member and the chair of this committee will be Kyle Vincent. He'll have a three-year term. And board member Sarah Olson, she will have a three-year term. Board member David Harris will have a two-year term. And board member Stephanie Taylor have a two-year term. Board member Jessica Tolman will have a one-year term. Board member Keela Gowdy will have a one-year term. And board member Nick Miller, who is elected representative on that committee. Along with that, we also have the Historic Preservation Committee. And I met with and feel a great addition to that committee would be an alternate board member in Max Mitchell to a three-year term there as well. So I recommend these, these men and women to serve our community, to you as a council. And I'd look for a motion to recommend to have them appointed.
I'll motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Bowman. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilmember Montoya. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Are there any opposed? Say nay. Okay, thank you, thank you. I had a wonderful couple of weeks in being able to sit down with these good men and women and discuss their desire to serve our community. And I am grateful for each one of them and for their willingness to serve. Do we have a report on our building permits and business licenses?
Yes, we do. Mayor and council, bear with me as I share my screen and get this up on the screen for you. Okay, can you see that? Okay, so yeah, we're into the new year, two thousand twenty-one. So this is kind of a report of how many building permits we did in total for the year two thousand twenty. As you can see, we had a huge influx of building permits before the end of the year. And the total number of permits that we had was four hundred and thirty, which I think is probably a Santaquin City record for building permits. Our building official Randy Spetafor has worked for the city for several years. And I think this is far and away the most building permits that the city has processed in a calendar year. So that is made up by three hundred and twenty-five new single-family homes and one hundred and five new multifamily units. So yeah, a huge year and we're not expecting that to slow down anytime soon. So there's a lot of development happening and we'll, we'll see how that progresses through the year two thousand twenty-one. Right now, there's, in the five days of this year, there's, there's been no building permits submitted. So there's nothing to report there. In terms of new business licenses, we have two. We have All Saints Firearms owned by Andrew Levitt at three thirty-four Flagstone Drive. This is online sales and sells by appointment. And then we have Bliss Daycare owned by Brendan Rodriguez at two oh six East, one fifty South, which is daycare and preschool. So happy to answer any questions that you have on this report.
No questions. Thank you, Jason, for that report. All right, new business, discussion, discussion and possible action. Construction manager, general contractor, CMGC bid award for the new city hall office building.
Well, Mayor and council, in your packet, you may have been able to review the vetting process that we've gone through, the CMGC process is familiar to the city and council. We've done that on multiple projects and been very successful in that. We went through the same extensive vetting process, received quite a bit of interest in our, in our CMGC process for the city hall. We had twenty-two potential contractors that were in attendance at the pre-proposal meeting. And we had eight of those twenty-two submit proposals for the CMGC. Of those eight, we went through the, again, a typical, very extensive process. We spent, between seven of us, we spent about a total of twenty hours reviewing those, going through the scoring process and coming up with our recommendation to you. And that recommendation is that we award a CMGC contract to Ellsworth Paulson Construction. Ellsworth Paulson has been, has constructed projects here in the city and very successfully within budget and within the contract time. And we recommend them for that award tonight. Happy to answer any questions on that. I will note that this award is just for the CMGC portion of the work and that there would be a future guaranteed maximum price change order that would come towards the council as the design gets finished. As indicated in the mayor's State of the Union or State of the City address tonight, the, the design is about a twenty percent. And that's one we wanted to bring on and would like to bring on the CMGC to help them, help us to get through design and constructibility, concerns of mitigating risks, et cetera, on the project. So we would bring that, that future guaranteed maximum price to you probably within the next ninety to one hundred and twenty days to be able to begin construction, depending on how fast the design can progress now.
Okay, any questions? Okay, nobody wants to talk to you, Norm? I'm excited. I'm excited for this and the process and to get somebody on and get going on this and see what we can get for what we, we've got the bond for. And hopefully it'll be, it'll be nice with the money that we have, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
I do not have a question, but I do have a comment. I want to thank staff because every time we go through this process where we put out an RFP and, and receive bids and there's a scoring process. And that gives me a lot of reassurance. I hope that it gives residents reassurance that companies who are awarded contracts for work for the city are not just randomly picked. They're not picked by favorites. They're not picked by, you know, who does somebody's brother-in-law work for or something like that. There is a well-established scoring process that each bid is evaluated. And that takes a lot of time for the staff to go through that process. But it's worth it and I just want to thank them for the work and sharing the information with us because it helps, like I said, give reassurance. So thank you.
It's probably also important to note that beyond Norm and Jason and myself, we also had Shannon Hoffman, Administrative Services Director, council member Nick Miller, our architect Ron Jones, who's also a member of our community and Historic Preservation Board and Architectural Review Board also go through and score so that any bias might, would be taken out, scorings would be averaged and, and the, the contract would be awarded in the most appropriate manner.
Great. Okay, yes, thank you, staff, for all you've done. I know it's a lot of work putting this together. Any other questions, comments? Okay, possible action via a motion to accept this bid?
Am I not sharing the right screen? I mean.
You had it up there.
Okay, sorry about that.
I look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we recommend are we awarded CMGC services for the new city hall construction to Ellsworth Paulson Construction in a not-too-exceed amount of three hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred ninety-eight dollars.
We have a motion by Councilman Meekum. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilman Hathaway. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Say nay. Okay, that's it. Congratulations, Ellsworth Paulson. All right, next on the agenda is resolutions, number eight, resolution zero one, zero one, two thousand twenty-one. Consolidated fee schedules. You bet.
Sure, I can take that. Mayor and council, as you are aware, ninety days ago, more than ninety days ago, Santaquin City completed and approved its update to its transportation and public safety master plans. Those master plans not only were updated extensively with, with our engineering department and community development department, but also went through a public process, a public hearing. And we involved comments not only from the Home Builders Association, but our attorney as well. That master plan was updated and approved in pursuant to state code. The fees that would be associated with that input update can be approved and enacted to be implemented against new construction that would take place within our community. And so that is what is before you with this resolution. Basically, it alters the transportation impact fee to seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty cents per unit as opposed to what it was previously under its calculated format. And then EMS and fire goes up to four hundred and ninety-five dollars per, per unit. And then for non-residential, it's per square foot. And for the police, three to thirty-five dollars and seventy-two cents per. And then for non-residential, it's, it's per square foot and for the police, three, thirty-five dollars and seventy-two cents per unit. That is what is before you for your consideration for adoption under resolution oh-one-oh-one, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, any questions, comments, council? If not, I look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion that we adopt resolution number zero-one dash zero-one dash two thousand twenty-one, a resolution establishing the fee schedule for Santaquin City.
We have a motion by Councilman Member Montoya. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second by Councilman Miller. Any further discussion on this resolution? If not, Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Uh, aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Councilman Meekum?
Aye.
And Councilmember Bowman?
Aye.
Thank you, that was unanimous. All right, off to reports. City Manager Reeves, what do you have to report?
Mayor and council, I don't have a, a whole lot to report. We're actively involved in getting ready for the kickoff to our budget. We just completed the audit, of course. But the thing that I did want to report on and, and give appreciation to is to our city staff. I know the mayor eloquently did so just a few minutes earlier. But over the Christmas holiday and, and New Year's holiday, you know, our, our public safety and public works crews didn't necessarily have the time off. They were out there making sure our, our community was safe and protected, clearing the streets and, and serving our community, ensuring that they had clean water and, and, and everything that they might need so to make their holidays great. And so just want to extend the appreciation to our staff that makes the quality of life in our community so great. And with that, I'll leave it to any questions the council may have of us.
Anything for Ben? Okay, Assistant City Manager Beasley?
Just been spending a lot of time answering questions and uploading information, et cetera, for the CMGC. So even through the holidays, worked on that, coordinated with contractors that submitted proposals, had a meeting, a, a pre-proposal meeting, et cetera, and that's been taking up quite a bit of our time and just keeping up on, trying to keep on, up on development and inspections and that type of thing going on. Other than that, nothing else to report this time, Aaron, unless you have questions or anything I can help you with.
Any questions for Norm?
Just one, Norm, did you get a chance to put in that order for that light pullover on?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It, it should be in this week and I'll report back to you on that.
Okay, thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Anything else? If not, Community Development Director Vaughn.
I have nothing more to add than what, what Ben or Norm has said.
Okay, any questions for Jason? Wow, everybody must want to go home or stay home, put it that way. All right, Councilmember Miller, can you report?
Uh, yeah, just quickly, so we, we, over yesterday, pretty, pretty much yesterday, we did all the interviews for the rec supervisor position. We interviewed eight applicants. Uh, we're still in the middle of the, we're still in the process of that, so it went really well. I thought we had really good qualified applicants. I mean, both, both this round and the last one were both really well, are really good. So I don't, I don't have anything more to report than that, other than John did a great job on, on the job posting and everything and, and was well-prepared for the interviews and, and did really good. So I would imagine our next meeting, we'll be able to discuss who we offered the job to and who's hopefully accepted it and we're moving forward. But that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Montoya, do you have anything to report?
Not today.
All right. Councilman Meekum, do you have anything?
Nothing for me.
All right, Councilman Hathaway?
Yeah, I just want to say a big thank you to all the staff for all the hard work they did this last year, beans it was such an awesome, terrible year. Anyway, good job, guys.
Diddle, thank you. And Councilmember Bowman?
Nothing to report, but I second that, Dave.
All right, thank you. Uh, I too. Two thousand twenty was an interesting year and we made it through. And I think we're better than we were before. And so I look forward to this, this amazing year coming up. I really think things are gonna, gonna be good and and thanks to everybody, all of you. I hope you had a wonderful holiday. Now we can get back to work and make things happen, so thank you. Uh, I think we have a need for an executive session, so we have that Zoom link. Uh, we'll see you back in about five minutes. Is that what you're thinking, Ben?
Yes, if you could wait at least five minutes before joining in, but we'll need a motion to go into that. It is for personnel.
Okay, all right, we have a motion, we need a motion to go into an executive session for personnel. What's, I got it right here. Hang on. Discuss the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual. I look for a motion.
Tom.
Who said that? Oh, Nick, we have a motion by Councilman Miller. We have a second.
I'll second it.
We have a second by Councilman Bo, Member Bowman. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Say nay. Thank you. See you a little over five.